I'd like to welcome everyone coming on a Monday night. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order for Western County School District, number one. Paul, would you lead us in the pledge? Got an agenda in front of you. I don't have any changes. It's been moved and approved. Seconded to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. C, recognitions. Go ahead.
Just on Facebook that Mrs. Engel was voted the FDLA Leader of the Year. That was pretty awesome.
Go ahead, Haley.
Um, this was gonna be part of mine, but Presley Fitzwater is the new state reporter for FDLA, and then Addison Fitzwater is the new state parliamentarian, which is great.
Is there any other recognitions? Go ahead, Tyler.
Uh, I would like, yeah, excuse me. I would like to recognize Mr. and Mrs. Munger for a successful close-up trip to DC. Thirty-five kids, thirteen adults. Uh, they went up and beyond to take care of the adults and to make sure that none of the luggage was lost. The kids got to where they needed to go, learned a little bit of things, seen DC and the greater Philly area. Just, and I would like to also recognize the close-up program, too. They've worked really close with the Mungers, uh, for our students, and I think it's just an awesome program.
Okay, thanks, Tyler. Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to visitors' comments. Um, autocross board members?
Um, at your last board meeting, you were talking about charging for parking, and I guess what I had heard was ten dollars a car. Um, I guess we're trying to bring people into town, um, and I guess help the businesses and so forth, and I think charging ten dollars a car, uh, you're gonna limit the number of people to show up for this event, and I guess we're trying to make money to pay for a lot of the other stuff that's going on. Um, we are gonna be charging, uh, anywhere from five to ten dollars for an entry fee to, to watch, um, I guess, the drag races. The autocross, uh, is free. Um, but I guess we just wanted to voice our concerns on that, on if you guys tried to do that.
I, I don't think we were set on a ten dollars. I think we were just throwing it out there for Saturday, when you guys are doing your drag up here. Just, you know, having the groups, um, like our local groups, school groups, just kind of man the parking lot, and I don't think we were set on ten dollars. I think Bryce just threw out that number to say, you know, if you have four hundred and fifty parking spots, ten dollars, this is how much you'll make. I don't think we're set on that. Um, the way I look at it, you guys chime in if you want. Um, it will probably be blocked off if there's no parking there. Um, we're taking the risk of letting people park there. We're already letting everyone borrow it, or you guys borrow it for the actual obstacle course. Um, I think that was just kind of something that was discussed. I don't think it was set in stone that we were gonna charge five bucks, three bucks, or whatever. We were just seeing if the opportunity, if some of the, um, local groups wanted, if that was something they'd wanna do, too, for a fundraiser. So I don't think we're set on a price, if we're even, you know, that type of thing.
Um, I guess another option would just be to have the donation jars out there.
Yeah, I mean, we could do something like that.
Um, but I guess our concern was even the charging five to ten dollars, that it's gonna limit the number of people that possibly come to our event.
But you guys are charging five or ten dollars to come watch the drag races, correct?
Correct. And we also have to pay entry fee, or we're gonna be collecting entry fees, but we have to cover advertising costs and insurance costs and several other things for the events to go on.
But, okay. Does anyone else have anything?
And again, it's the first year for this event, so there's a lot of additional costs we have to bring in, uh, barricades, uh, which aren't gonna be cheap.
Okay. Go ahead, Joe.
Um, I just wanna repeat what Billy said. I mean, the, we would like to see something out of this as well, because, I mean, we are taking on a lot of risk of having autocross in there. I think, you know, yeah, ten dollars may be too expensive. Like Billy said, it was just a number we threw out there. I mean, even if it's two dollars or something, it'd be nice to have something as, that we may be able to get back in case something happened. Um, I did wanna bring up another thing was, uh, possibly buses. We discussed that. We, I don't think we've gotten to talk to Troy, but if there's an opportunity to be able to bust people was another idea that we kind of threw around in our reg board meeting. You know, if you have an autocross here and you got people parking up bum guards, I don't think they're gonna wanna walk, and I think that's gonna deter people just as much as a ten-dollar parking spot. So, I mean, if we were able to do something like that, um, I think maybe it'd be nice if one of us was able to come to your board meeting, as long as it's approved of us to come on and ask questions with all your board there, maybe?
Absolutely.
So...
I guess the bus thing was one thing we were talking about, uh, having them parked somewhere else and have a pickup and, and bus up to the event, so we can limit the parking.
Hi, Paul. It's been a while since I've been to Deadwood, but I think they charge more than ten bucks a spot, and they're packed, from one end of that town to the other. So I think if you're gonna have drag races out here rather than walk or be bust, there's a lot of people that would be willing to pay ten dollars for a parking spot for all day. I know I would, and that's capitalism at work, right?
Okay, does anybody else have anything else?
But, thanks for listening.
No, yeah, and we'll get back with you. Like I said, we're just throwing ideas and numbers out there, so, but...
Shut this off. Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, visitors' comments, moving on to number two. Judy?
Good evening, and thank you so much. I appreciate you adding me to your agenda. Um, for those of you who haven't met me yet, my name is Judy Trokey-Moynan. I am the Central Northeast Uniserve Director for Wyoming Education Association, and tonight I'm speaking on behalf of the Newcastle Education Association. Um, your president, Kylie Shoemaker, is at volleyball tonight, so she was unable to be here, and so we, we talked a little bit about it and decided that I would come and visit with you a little bit. I just wanted to, um, remind the board about the timeline of a situation that has been ongoing. So in February of 2023, we had some members who raised some concerns to us, and we met with them, and we met with Mr. LaCroix, and we had some good conversation, and we had several meetings, and there was negligible change to the situation. So then, February of 2024, the association brought those same complaints to this body. We brought them to the board, and, um, there were some questions back and forth from, from the board to the members. The, the board asked for some clarification and for some evidence and some specifics for what the situation was, and, and the members provided that. We asked for an independent investigation into the situation. So, keep in mind, that was February of 2023 that we started with Mr. LaCroix. 2024, we met with the board. There was no independent investigation until August of 2024. So, the investigation took place, and our understanding was the investigation was finished about September of 2024. There were a lot of people to, to interview, and, um, there was a, a report that was supposed to have been submitted to the board, but my understanding then is that that report did not get to the board for a good while, and in December of 2024, the, the members were getting tired of not having heard anything about this, this investigation that had taken place in August, and so we involved the WA attorney, because we were the only ones who hadn't gotten an attorney involved at that point, because you had district attorney involved. There was another attorney involved. So, there was a letter written from the WA attorney to the district's attorney saying, hey, what's going on with this investigation? So, my understanding then was you received the report filing in January, and there was some conversation, and the last thing that we heard was last month in February, two years after this whole process had started, and the district's attorney wrote a letter to the WA attorney, and they had some conversation, which was good, practical conversation, and then I was given some of that information to relay back to the members as to what was going on. So, I come to you with a request, and I'm, you may have noticed, I'm being very careful to observe the rules of open session, not naming names, not naming details, not naming specifics. So you on the board should know exactly what I'm talking about, which is the intent. Um, the request that we have is twofold. Number one, we would like a copy of the redacted investigation report. We had requested the investigation report. We're told that because it contained names, it could not be released, but we would like a redacted copy that does not, in fact, have the names. And second of all, in the last letter from the attorney, what we got was some suggestions on how the district and the association could work together, but it went from the district's attorney to the WA attorney to me and not really to the members until I relayed that. So my request would be that the district make a direct request for the committee that was mentioned in this report, so that we can get something moving and get the situation resolved, because today is March 31st, 2025, over two years since we brought our concerns initially to your superintendent. So, that, that is my request and my review of the timeline, and you could ask me questions. I probably could not necessarily answer them in open session. I'm happy to answer what I can, if you have questions for me.
Go ahead, Brad.
Mr. Chair, Abby, are, are you available? Nobody on? Um, so, not that I'm an attorney, but I think what I'm going to ask Judy is, I think I need your request in writing.
Okay. I believe that the WA attorney is going to make that request in writing of your district's attorney.
Okay, but then I think we're back to what the concern was, that you just brought forward that...
Direct communication.
If it's gonna be a tennis tournament with those two, then you and I aren't gonna be able to play tennis.
If you would like me to write you a direct request, I can certainly do that.
That's what I would need.
I mean, that's really what you're fighting for, is let's have actual conversations when these things happen, and let's really look for results, instead of just lob political talking points at each other. Is, is that kind of what you're after?
Oh, yes. I, I really, I have tried to engage the experts and their liars. I'm sorry to say, I've had the experience where they lie, and what, what they do is they, they, um, change the name of facilities to erase the history of it, you know? Um, it's, it's pretty scary, but I'm, I'm open to, um, talking to behavioral health experts, um, the drug companies. Um, I just think that they've dominated the conversation, so what I wanna do is softly talk about it and say, these are the facts that I found. Where am I wrong? Nobody's ever said, you're wrong about this, Sheila, and I...
If you would like me to write you a direct request, I can certainly do that.
That's what I would need.
I would be happy to do that. Thank you, Superintendent LaCroix. Other questions for me?
Any other questions? I think...
Thank you for your time. I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
No, we haven't made that kind of an error. Sorry, can we close that one?
Yeah, we can.
Do you wanna take, I've been a break. We're waiting.
Sorry.
See no other visitors' comments. We'll move on to E, action items, the consent agenda. Have a motion to approve, and second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. No, no old, or no old business to discuss. We'll move on to new business, A, certified resignations.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would recommend to the board, um, the approval of the certified rec, um, resignation of Zane Marty as an elementary teacher.
There's been a motion to approve the resignation of Zane Marty as elementary teacher, and second, is there any discussion? Go ahead, Dana.
We'd like to thank him for his service.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. B, classified resignation.
Again, I have a certified resignation from Chad Osserson for the K-12 adaptive PE teacher.
There's been a motion to approve the recommendation of Chad Osserson as K-12 adaptive PE teacher, and second, is there any discussion?
Also, thank you for his service.
Hey. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. C, certified resignation.
I would ask the board, um, to approve the resignation of Marty Osserson as the K-5 title math teacher.
Motion's been, for the classified recommendation of Marty Osserson as a K-5 title math teacher, and second, is there any discussion?
Again, could we thank her for her service?
All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. D, certified resignation.
I have the certified resignation of Aaron Pazinski as a K-12 literacy facilitator.
Move to approve and thank her for her service.
Okay, there's been a motion to approve the recommendation for classified resignation for Aaron Pazinski as K-12 literacy facilitator. Is there any dis, and properly second, is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. E, seven-day period at high school for twenty?
Mr. Chairman, let me give you a little background information, 'cause there's a little bit of confusion around this. Um, there really is an example that I can point to this year with a staffing pattern, but as you can see previously in the board agenda, when we have those resignations or retirements, with our very small class sizes coming up soon, they are not in the middle of the high school yet, but the move to the seven-period day is an attempt to try to correctsize the district, i.e. that we can share middle school and high school staff to try to keep the programming that currently is in place, so that when you do have a singleton person that leaves, or vice versa, um, it just gives the district a little bit more flexibility, and yes, the middle school and the high school is as large as they've been for a while, not as large as they've been, um, but I believe this week we are under seven hundred and thirty students district-wide. Um, so it's an attempt to let the staff get ready. Um, we will, we will prorate the graduation requirements the same as we did when we left the seven-period day. Um, so basically, what it will look like is next year's seniors, um, it'll still be twenty-eight, and then the year after that'll go down to twenty-seven, twenty-six, twenty-five, twenty-four. Um, and so twenty-four, um, the max that a student can earn during the school day is twenty-eight. That allows them a cushion of failing one a year, which I still think is awful lenient. Um, but, um, we might have that discussion later, but the recommendation in front of the board is to move the high school to a seven-period day for this calendar year of twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Okay, I have a recommendation to move the calendar, high school calendar, to a seven-day period. Do you have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Do you have a second? Okay, it's been moved and seconded to recommendation, high school going to a seven-day class period starting in twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. F, revision to policy IKF.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna need some help on this one, if you would, Sonia. Um, but basically, what, what the recommendation in front of the board is to make the corrections, um, that are in participation or are in alignment with the new legislative requirements coming from the state. And so, it, it is a, a recommendation, but I would also tell you, it's probably going to be a working recommendation, um, when you start looking at competency-based learning, um, some of the online learning, um, and really, um, the new direction, I think statewide, um, for exploratory kind of learning, um, where students can earn credits through, um, what we would always refer to as, um, work experience kinds of things. Um, so with that, um, I would make that recommendation, but for clarification, I would ask Sonia to, to fill in the blanks, or at least if there's board questions, she would entertain them better than I.
You guys wanna just to fill a sanity, wanna just, if you could, thank you.
Yep, yep, I'd too. Thanks, Mr. Chair. Um, yeah, so as Superintendent LaCroix said, basically, the, um, the updates to the policy are just to reflect what current language is in statute. Um, and that would be chapter thirty-one, which is graduation requirements. So, um, he is right in that our current policy does say, uh, and one way to, um, measure progress towards, you know, graduation or diploma is by successful performance on a competency-based equivalency exam. Um, and that, uh, from the discussion in, like, draft that I've seen of chapter thirty-one, um, that phrase, so competency-based equivalency examinations, um, is kind of prevalent throughout of that document. What that means basically is, um, they've defined it in the new draft, which is not approved yet, mind you, but I think they're getting closer to wanting to bring that forward, um, as an ongoing process, um, to collect, for a collection of evidence, so not just a one-time test, essentially. Um, so multiple measures, many ways. Um, oftentimes, it, you know, sometimes it could be very much, um, skill-based, real-world-based, uh, um, performance-based, um, much outside of just a pencil-paper thing. Um, so that's why you had a change this morning, or this afternoon, that CLO sent an updated draft, was just to keep that first paragraph the same. Um, in the section where it is, one, common core of knowledge, and it lists A through L, all the different, uh, um, let's say, content areas, per se, the only changes there would be just to make the same exact, um, phrasing as the statute. So, for example, career, we have in our current policy, career vocational education, um, that has changed to career and technical education. So that would be just that change. Um, we have in our current policy, foreign cultures and languages, and that has been changed to world languages. Um, so, anyway, so those, that, those changes in that section are more just vocabulary, just to be consistent with the state. Um, the only other change was at the very end, the very last paragraph, um, our current policy right now has several different, um, statements of correspondence courses, and when we were looking at the dra, or our current policy, that's a term that you don't really hear very much anymore. Um, you usually hear online courses, or virtual courses, or, um, alternative courses, that, those kind of things. So that, that is why the recommendation is to change that verbiage. Um, and I do think, as Superintendent LaCroix stated, there'll be different, um, there'll be a reason to relook at this policy multiple times, um, in the next probably six to twelve months, once chapter thirty-one gets signed into law. Uh, what is currently not in our policy is graduation standards, which is why they're redoing chapter thirty-one. I mean, a main reason, which is why the profile of the graduate started, is because the Attorney General, back at two thousand, whatever it was, nineteen-ish, I think, um, basically said, in statute, we have to have graduation standards, and their interpretation of what was in statute in the law is there are no distinct graduation standards. So, um, that's what will be added as far as what's required by the district and what's required by students to graduate and earn a diploma, and that, whatever that comes out to be, will be needed to be included in the, um, policies in the future. But, um, I wouldn't add anything just yet, just because we don't know exactly what it is. Uh, and so there will definitely be systems to put into place around that. Um, the addition to the policy, so IKFE, so the ask of that is just to kind of very much in black and white, clarify what the progression of transition from going to, um, eight potential, like, eight course classes a year offerings for students at the high school, down to seven. So as it transitions, our incoming freshman class will be the first class that will only have an option of seven periods every single year for all four years of high school. So that's just, and, um, I guess, an attempt to make sure it's black and white.
The new store. This is the one-stop shop. We have a pharmacy. We have a bootleggers' liquor. The deli, the food that you can get at a lunchtime is so amazing. The coffee shop. Certain Friday mornings, there's thirty people sitting here in all these chairs. This is the hub for people to come and visit, have their coffee, have their doughnuts. It's amazing what this area has done. Totally amazing.
For all four years of high school. So that's just, and, um, I guess, an attempt to make sure it's black and white. Um, another thing that would be in those graduation requirements, um, also include the change for elective credits. So just to be very, um, clear on those, currently, we have half a credit is required for fine arts or performing arts, and an additional half a credit is required for world languages. Looking at Hathaway requirements, those have all been blended together. They used to be separate, but they're currently all together in the same, um, category for the Hathaway Scholarship. So that attempt would be moving that world languages into that fine and performing arts category also, meaning, um, for a half a credit, um, requirement, students could take a fine arts class, a performing arts class, or a world language, not and. So, those are basically the changes. So, I would entertain questions if you have any questions for me.
Do we have any questions? Okay, so we have a recommendation board to approve the revisions of policy IKF, graduation requirements, and add IKF-dash-E, graduation credit requirements exhibits. Do I have a motion? Okay, it's got a motion, and second, to approve the recommendation for IKF, graduation requirements, add IKF-dash-E. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. G, director resignation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I would recommend to the board, uh, the resignation from Denise Anderson as the food service director. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I would recommend to the board, uh, the resignation from Denise Anderson as the Food Service Director.
So moved, and to thank her for all her years of service.
Okay, it's, we have a motion and a second to approve the recommendation for the Director of Denise Anderson, and thank her for all she's done as Food Service Director. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. H.
Mr. Chair, I would recommend to the Board the resignation of Madison Holden as the Middle School Special Ed Paraprofessional.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to accept the reg- recognition of Madison Holden as Middle School Special Education Paraprofessional. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion plat- passes. I, classified resignation.
Yes, I would make the recommendation, um, for the resignation of Kristy Lewis as the Elementary Special Ed Education Paraprofessional at the end of the school year.
It's, it's been moved and second to approve the classified resignation of Kristy Lewis as Elementary Special Education Paraprofessional. Is there any discussion? Like to thank her for all her years of service as well. Is there any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. J.
I would make the recommendation for the classified staff of James Phillips as the Lead Custodian, effective June thirteenth.
It's been moved and second to accept the resignation of James Phillips as Lead Custodian, and the thanking him for his service. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. K, certified resignation.
Mr. Chair, I would recommend the resignation of Melissa Sisk as the Elementary Special Education Teacher.
Years of service and everything.
Okay, it's been moved and second to accept the reg- resignation of Melissa Sisk as Elementary Special Education Teacher, and thanking her for her years of service. Is there any other discussion? Go ahead, Paul.
It doesn't sound like it's lost on this board that for ten years she drove from Rapid City to serve this district. That kind of dedication doesn't come along very often, and it's not lost on me what a special individual she is. She's one of the few employees I've ever gotten fan mail from, from the parents, and she will be missed. I certainly hope they appreciate what a special individual they're getting in Melissa.
Thanks, Paul. Is there any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. F, for your information, we'll start with the Directors. Bo, you got anything? Is there any questions for Bo? Adam, we'll just move to you.
I just got a quick one, uh, that slide come in for the elementary school. Uh, Colby and I spent half a day Saturday out there, got the slide put in, weather wasn't very helpful, so. We got some other equipment taken out, um, it's moved in the shop, the stuff we're gonna put in, waiting to dry out, he'll be back Wednesday afternoon, Thursday, we'll work in the shop, get the stuff glued on, and then we will get it set, hopefully Thursday, if the weather cooperates a little better. On that, I don't have anything, unless you guys got questions.
Any questions for Adam? Troy, we'll just jump to you. Okay, is there any questions for Troy?
Um, what are your thoughts of possibly using buses for the, that weekend of the autocross thing?
I, I think I'm okay with it, it's just, we gotta figure out, I mean, of course, we gotta pay for the mileage on the buses, and the, and the drivers' wages and stuff like that. Other than that, if we can figure it out, I think we have a lot of volunteers that would do it.
And I, I just wanna say, I'm just asking that, just so we, you know, for future reference. I don't wanna sit there and say, hey, we're gonna use buses without talking, you know, to you guys first. It was just a discussion item, that's why I brought it up.
Okay, is there any other questions for Troy? Okay, jump to Angie.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have anything, unless you have questions for me.
Okay, is there any questions for Angie? Okay, you wanna wait and tell rec board? Okay, give me anything, son. Okay, Haley, you wanna go ahead and go?
Um, okay, I have a couple things, and some of them I probably should have done during the recognition, so I apologize for that. Yeah, so, um, I would like to introduce to you guys the new Executive Council for the next school year. Unfortunately, our secretary was unable to join us tonight, but Ally Lundstra is our secretary, and then Josie Smith, if you'd like to stand, is our Vice President, and Presley Fitzwater is our Executive President. So I'd like to congratulate them, and then, you guys are good, yeah, you can, okay. And then, this is where my long list comes in. We just had our state FBLA, and these are all of the students who qualified for Nationals. Ivy Bow, Lily Morrell, Presley Fitzwater, Haley Bishram, Ruth Rose, Elijah Morrell, Thatcher Trafgrubin, Callie Christensen, Jaden Corley, Cole Urb, Colin McConkey, Drew Conselman, and Presley Fitzwater. And then, again, like I said, Presley and Addy are new, uh, state officers, which is great. And then, state FCCLA just happened, and they ha- we had three, um, sorry, students who received medals, and I'm not sure if they are going to Nationals, because FCCLA does it different with, uh, Level Three and Level Two, and I think all three of them are Level Two. So I'd like to recognize Ethan Parsons, Laney Lewis, and Taryn Allison. And state FFA is next week, so I'll probably have a report on that in the next meeting. And then, the last thing I have is Student Council is making a trip to visit KC and have our second half of our council exchange with them on the seventh, so that's all. Thank you.
Okay, you sure you don't got anything else to add to that?
No.
Go ahead, Brad.
Ladies, just to remind you, so if the President can't make it, the President can delegate the meeting duties to anyone else. Um, meaning, meaning that you're always welcome here, but we understand that you're busy, but it doesn't always have to just be the President. So keep that in mind as you enjoy your power and authority.
We'll move on. Brad, you got anything?
I do not, Mr. Chair, uh, this time.
Okay, um, any board reports? Okay, go ahead.
The BOCs, um, met day after our last board meeting, elected new officers. Um, we went over financial reports, but the really cool thing, I thought, that each coordinator gave us a nice report, and Kim gave ours, and I thought it was really cool. They gave us a sheet that absolutely showed attendance, and you can see it, it's really little, attendance error that in each of the different schools, and who it uses, the concurrent, all those kind of things. And the only one that beat us was Douglas, 'cause, and ours was, let's see, total enrollment, and that's with, um, students registered concurrent classes and dual classes, eight hundred and forty-one, and we came in at, that was Douglas, and we came in at four hundred and thirty-eight, and the other closest one was Wheatland, but we beat them too. So I thought that was really cool to show what our EWC and how much, how much they do, which I thought was cool. That's it.
Go ahead. Mr. Chair, just so the Board knows, for the last thirty-two years, I think that data has always been fairly consistent. For the first time in thirty-two years, I think the budget might now follow the student needs. Um, so in the past, there were other programs that were way under our student usage, and some of them got almost three times as much funding. So, um, there's been a lot of whining, a lot of crying, um, and I still don't think it's perfect. Um, but truly, the first time in thirty-two years, when we decided not to do, let's see, we did dual and concurrent, and we walked away from, what was that other one called, where you do the textbooks? Um, I can't think of the programming. Um, Jerry Anderson made the decision. Uh, but anyway, um, that far back is how long that this, this thing has been in flight, and, and really Jerry Anderson is the one that, that put it forward.
Okay, thank you for the board report, thanks for the information, Brad. Um, we'll move on to future agenda items. April second, we're gonna have a special board meeting, six o'clock for an executive session under Wyoming State Statute sixteen dash four, dash four oh five, little i, little i. So is there any other future agenda items you might wanna add to it? Okay, moving on, discussion items, end of the year staff celebration.
Yes, so, um, the intent of the celebration is to try to recognize everybody in front of their peers. The intent of the celebration is to try to recognize everybody in front of their peers. Um, in the fall, when we do the, the school kickoff, it's a lot easier, um, because you don't have as many activities and moving pieces. Um, I'm not saying that May twenty-first is the best date, um, but it is the date and the time, um, that what we would ask the board to do, if you could, is to join us, it'd be very similar to the kickoff at the start of the year. Um, but we'll allow staff to come in, we'll do all kinds of different recognitions, including years of service, pins, um, five, ten, fifteen, twenty, and on up. And then we'll also recognize those people, many of those tonight, for their years of service, and then any other kind of celebration, but it will be in place of what traditionally was always the, the end of the year get-together at the Flying V.
Okay.
So if you can put that on your calendars and make it work, it's gonna be a really, it's just a difficult time. And I don't know unless you did it in April during a snowstorm, that there's a better date. Um, it's just tough, 'cause you got, you know, weather that moves track, and soccer, golf. Um, you've got graduation, everyone's making plans, it just gets to be pretty wild from here on out.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any other discussion items? Seeing none, I'll call this meeting adjourned.
Well, we'll just jump right in. Um, I'll call the Eastern West County Recreation Board to order. Um, you have an agenda in front of you, um, do I have a motion to approve agenda? Been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, same sign. Agenda's approved. Recognitions, is there any recognitions for the rec board? Seeing none, we'll move on to visitors' comments, staff input, and special programs. Seeing none, we'll move on to action items, a consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, same sign. Consent agenda's passed, um, I have no old business, I have no new business. Um, F, is there anything for our information or your information? Seeing none, we'll move on to discussion items.
I don't know what to say.
Um, if, if you don't mind, um, there was a request, um, that may be coming down, but one of the area ranches is going to celebrate their one-hundredth year of the ranch. And so, um, there, there might be some possible details coming forward with that. And then the other thing I think I would point out to this board is the similar kind of confusion and frustration, um, that the city's having with, you know, trying to get all the groups, I think in the newspaper, it's soccer and softball. Um, but again, it, it just is, it's just such a stress to try to work with everyone's schedule, um, whether it's adequate space or not adequate space. Um, and then, of course, you know, Teresa's, um, complexity is, is, um, a lot of times, groups don't wanna share. And so I can only, you know, I can only have the gym, if I get the whole gym, I don't want the half of the gym. And when you have those kinds of things, it makes that job very difficult, because, um, for a small community, as many resources as we have, w- we never have enough. So I just wanted to let you know that, and I think the other details will be coming forward at a later date.
Thank you for that. We'll be looking forward to hearing about that hundred-year celebration further. Um, there's no other information, we'll move on to G, item one, charge for parking during drag races.
Mr. Chair.
Billy.
Um, I, I guess I'll throw it out there, um, like Paul said, it's their choice if they wanna park or not. Um, if our student groups wanna, um, do that for a fundraiser, I hundred percent support them if they wanna charge five bucks. Um, the way I look at it is, we're letting them borrow our parking lot to do their optical course. Um, if they say that, no, you can't charge, then we close our parking lot for nobody. I mean, I don't see, to me, they're complaining 'cause we're gonna charge, but they're gonna charge five or ten bucks for them to come watch.
Mm-hmm.
Um, like I said, we're taking on, we're letting them donate in our parking lot to them.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I'm, I think that's what we need to be, is five bucks or whatever, the, the group, if we have groups that wanna actually man it.
Mm-hmm.
Otherwise, I think we should close it, and I don't know, you're just adding more wear and tear on it if you're letting people park in it. Correct, Adam? I mean, that, that's my feelings, I don't know how you guys feel, but...
I'll add on to that, too, was our big, our fear of even doing autocross there, you know, not just the wear and tear on the asphalt, but the facilities, is it gonna get drenched? You know, or how are people gonna take care of the area that they're in, or the lack of care for the area that they're in, 'cause I don't believe Adam or anybody else should have to take any extra time for this to pick up after somebody else's, and we all know people don't always like to pick up after themselves. Adam?
Just a thought, if you do have student groups charge five bucks, whatever, whatever that student group is, should take on some responsibility to clean up that parking lot, too, when it's...
Yeah, no, I agree. I agree. But let's, let's back off on that bus thing, because if they're gonna complain that we're gonna charge five bucks for bus, or for parking, we're gonna have to charge them for the bus, correct?
Absolutely.
So, I mean, I, I sure hope they don't ask us to donate buses to them, but...
Yeah.
So, Mr. Chair, um, throughout the years, we've done different things with, um, all-school reunions, um, different venues where groups went to Rapid or surrounding areas for plays and things. Um, that fee's gonna really be set by those people that really don't volunteer. I mean, they are stepping forward, but the rate in what you pay, and the rate in what you have to pay for mileage, is gonna be set, I think, by the state. I don't think you get any wiggle room with, with a taxpayer's bus.
So we need to make sure we, they know that, they're aware of that, that it's gonna be a fee. But I don't know how you guys feel about that parking lot, that's just my...
Mr. Chair, going to the Central States Fair, you pay five dollars to park out in the booties, in the dust, in the junk. I mean, if we wanna charge five bucks, fine, I think we're getting a bargain at five. If they don't wanna pay five bucks to park in our parking lot, they can walk. I, I hate to be that way, but that's the way every other venue is, I don't know why we gotta be so different to give them a free parking spot, I really don't. I think it's a bargain at five.
You know, and on that point, I'm kinda curious, do we even have to ask them? I mean, I don't know, it's, it's our parking lot. I mean, if we wanna let out people to park, we could, you know.
The last time I checked, they came to ask us to use the parking lot for their stuff, right?
Correct.
I don't think we're asking them if we can charge to use that parking lot for parking. That's this board's decision, right?
I, I believe so.
Ask it to use for the obstacle, of course, they didn't say nothing about parking on a Saturday, so.
Absolutely. Tyler?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I'm in agreement with everybody here. I mean. Paul said it earlier, uh why they were here during the regular meeting, that, you know. People are going to pay five dollars to walk a hundred yards to a drag strip. Then park at Baumgar's and walk a mile more to the drag strip. They're gonna do it. People are going to do it and I think our clubs should benefit from it. The school should benefit from it. Like you guys have already said, it's our parking lot. We're taking the risk on trash, the parking lot itself, our buildings. You know, and it's a convenience.
Absolutely. Um is there any other discussion with this? Anybody else? Going once, going twice. You sure, Sean?
I haven't heard you speak for quite a while, so.
Um. Item number two for discussion items is student activity food vendor for autocross.
You wanna touch on that, see, or did you? So we talked to, oh, I forgot his name, with the state, Derek with the state. What I'm understanding is the groups do not need a food license. I think that was one of the questions that was brought up, if they needed a temporary license, so Bryce is aware of that. I think he was waiting to send a letter out and tell. He got that, I guess, maybe. So he'll be sending a letter to the activity groups to see if there's interest in. Vendors and how many.
So, thank you.
He did say, he sent that attachment.
He did send the attachment of the requirements to have a, a, a vendor, you know, water sanitized. And he did say he's gonna come by around and check or somebody will, and if they're not followed, he will shut them down. So he, they do have to follow those guidelines pretty strict.
And, and I think Bryce has those guidelines that he's gonna include in that letter.
Okay. Anything else on the food vendor for autocross? Tyler?
Uh I just got one quick question. Um we've talked about having the student groups do the food vendors and stuff. I know the city is going to put out uh so many receptacles for garbage and trash. Would it be wise where if we have enough student groups doing it, so where we basically have the admin parking lot out here? Would it be wise for us as this uh to have a receptacle for trash for the students to use? So they wouldn't have to walk to one of the city ones, or how does that work?
So usually with like state, regional, Cupid Classic. Um those kinds of things, um I would assume the group's gonna be, bring in a dumpster. And, and then we would just participate in that dumpster so that we don't fill up everything on a Monday morning. Or worse yet, have everything filled up and then we just set it off to the side till Monday morning. Um but usually they bring in that great big red roll-off. Thing, whatever they call those in the construction business. And what are those? The roll-off? Um and, and they all use that. Um cause there are, when we have regional venues, w- we have to do that already. Um so um that's something what we can coordinate with them.
Okay, is there any other discussion item, discussion on that? Um that's all we have for this meeting. Meeting adjourned.